Manistee City Planning Commission, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Schmansky?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Slavinsky?
Here.
And Vice, or and Chair Whitliff is absent. Community Development Director?
Here.
And Administrative Assistant?
Here.
Roll call complete.
At this time, the Planning Commission can take action to approve the July 11th, 2024 Agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick?
I'll second your argument.
Seconded by Roger. Any discussion? None? Take roll, please.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair will ask if any members have conflicts of interest on the approved Agenda. Are there any conflicts?
None.
None, okay. At this time, the Planning Commission can approve the June 6th, 2024 Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Shelley. Seconded by Marine. Any discussion? None? Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Any correspondence that has been shared with the Planning Commission will not be read aloud. Do we have any other correspondents?
None at this time.
Thank you. Next, we move on to our Presentation Speaker, Manistee County Community Foundation.
She's got the clicker here for you. I think it's in the drawer. There it is. Yeah.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to speak to the Planning Commission. My name is Laura Heinselman. I'm the President and CEO of the Manistee County Community Foundation, and I'm pleased to be joined this evening by Sarah Herberger, our staff member, who's our Program Officer and leads our Grant Program at the Foundation. Thank you. I am looking forward to sharing some about the work and the mission of the Manistee County Community Foundation, as well as some of our recent highlights. For more than 35 years, we have served the Manistee County community, serving as a vehicle for philanthropy, helping to connect donors with making meaningful and lasting change across Manistee County. It's why the Manistee County Community Foundation exists, whether from year-round residents, seasonal residents, or those who are fortunate to spend just a few beautiful days here. Contributions to the community foundations become local community assets that help support and sustain this place that we all love. We're especially thankful to this special group of people here who served as the founding Board of Directors for the Manistee County Community Foundation, and they had the vision and the foresight to put this vehicle in place that benefited our community then and still does so today and will for generations to come. Whoops, wrong direction. The Manistee County Community Foundation is one of more than 65 in Michigan, more than 1,000 across the United States, that exists to serve our local community, in our case, Manistee County. No two community foundations are alike because by design we are serving the local needs and opportunities of the places that we serve, in our case, Manistee County. Our foundation's purposes were clear from the very beginning, to serve and provide a, to build a lasting source of community capital, to award grants that address community needs and opportunities, and to help convene and lead for positive community change. The Manistee County Community Foundation is unique in a couple of respects. The first is that we're the only entity serving Manistee County that impacts all aspects of life, so from youth, education, arts and culture, community development and employment, health and human services, and so much more. And the second is that we are a permanent institution. Our objective is for good forever, and so the funds that we focus are managed in a special way and invested in a special way so that they can continually generate spending and grants to support their needs and their purposes and perpetuity. We're a public charity. We're governed by a volunteer Board of Directors that have diverse perspectives, bring different aspects and focuses of leadership, and provide accountability for the community foundation. The foundation ourselves and the community as a whole are very fortunate to benefit from this dedicated group of community leaders. And we are powered by a professional team of five. Just recently hired Brandy Martin, our Director of Finance and Operations. We have Shelley Harakavina, our Grant and Scholarship Coordinator. Kelsey Rhodes serves as our Youth Advisory Council, or Yak Advisor, and then Sarah Herberger and myself. A couple of years ago, we were fortunate to move into the new West Shore Community College, Manistee Downtown Education Center, and so we're thrilled to be right here in downtown Manistee and to have the opportunity to work more easily and collaborate with our building partners and others across the city. The foundation has always had a core focus on youth and education, and we feel really strongly about supporting our students' success from early childhood through career. And we do that in a few different ways. One is by convening the Youth Advisory Council. I'll talk just a little bit more about that later. Of course, there are scholarship programs. And the Launch Manistee Network, which if you haven't heard of that before, it's a countywide initiative that is convened by the community foundation, and it is a cross-sector collaboration of, of course, education partners, but so much more. We have governmental partners at the table. We have philanthropy, community agencies, and more. And so we're really saying, education in our community is everyone's responsibility, not just the schools, and working together to help, help address that. More recently, we have been working specifically in that area around an effort called Raising Manistee County, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that because it addresses one of our community's greatest challenges, which is, of course, the lack of access to affordable childcare. And I wanted to share that, again, similarly, there's a host of cross-sector community partners that are helping to move this work forward. For about a year and a half, there was a planning process, some community opportunities to learn about what the state of childcare was in Manistee County, what some of the barriers were. And the goals that are listed here were adopted as part of that process, really aimed at helping to find solutions. So the first one being to help build that workforce up by respecting, recruiting, and revitalizing that workforce. The second being to increase investment in the system as a whole and build a whole community network of support. The third, to increase community education around the early childhood system and to develop kind of a one-stop shop, a place where, whether you're looking for childcare, you want to get involved in the workforce, maybe you're a professional, a one-stop shop for that. And then the fourth is to promote and increase access, of course, so that we can increase the availability of that childcare supply. We were fortunate that the community foundation, on behalf of this Raising Manistee County Initiative, was awarded a grant from the State of Michigan, the Rural Readiness Program Grant, which has allowed us to jumpstart that, and we recently established a Raising Manistee County Childcare Solutions Fund at the community foundation so we can kind of pool those monies together and raise more monies that are going to help us address these goals listed. A new program that I wanted to share with the Planning Commission tonight about in particular is something called Impact Investing. It's a new tool in our toolbox that we're devoted about. It came out of recognizing that our grant-making alone is not going to be enough to help us address our community's complex and increasingly expensive challenges, such as housing, such as childcare that we talked about. So we've been talking about how can we help more? And we considered ways to expand our impact beyond that and looked at reflecting and learning from what other community foundations and other foundations are doing, is taking a portion of their monies that are invested, and rather than investing them in our traditional portfolio, looking at ways that we can invest them locally, right here in Manistee County. Now, we won't be doing that ourselves on our own. We are not loan experts, you know, we don't have that expertise, but we're partnering with a special type of entity called a Community Development Financial Institution. They have that expertise. They are a special type of financial institution that really helps to serve underserved communities, helps to increase access to affordable capital. They don't compete with banks, but they partner with banks because they each do different things for community members. And so when we talk about impact investing, it's really the sweet spot in the middle where we are looking to both generate a financial return because that's important to us to continue to fulfill our mission and have money available for grant-making each year, but we're also looking for that community benefit. So impact investing, we're expecting both a financial return and a social return on those investments. And I'm pleased to share that we have made $250,000 loans to two community development financial institutions, and they in turn have begun loaning here in Manistee County. So I hope to very soon have more updates to share with the community about the specifics of how those loans are helping to enhance the quality of life here, helping to strengthen our economy. But again, I wanted to make sure that this group, you know, staff and Planning Commission members, is aware of the program and can help connect local businesses, emerging business owners with opportunities like this. We are excited to put these monies to work for the benefit of our community. I also wanted to provide some overall updates about the community foundation. So at the end of last year, we were comprised of over 100 different component funds, again, crossing all different aspects of quality of life. Some of them benefit a particular program at a particular nonprofit. Others are completely unrestricted so that they can evolve with the needs of our community as they evolve over time, scholarship funds, donor-advised funds, and others. New funds last year included the Onecoma Village Park Improvement Fund. So they've engaged the community to help them make some wonderful improvements in the park there, as well as the Caliva Historical Society Fund, which helps support the Bottle House Museum, if you've ever been there. Our investment performance in 2023 was strong, ended the year at over 16%. Grew our total net assets over $35 million. But the number that we're most proud about is the number of grants and scholarships awarded. So more than $700,000 went out to the Manistee County community, helping to support students and families and organizations. We can't fulfill our mission without all of the people and entities across the county that are working very hard to implement programs, and I know many of you are involved in exactly those things. So we thank you for your work, too. The Youth Advisory Council is another group that we are really proud of. They are high school students from all of the county's high schools that are engaged in philanthropy, learning leadership skills. They serve as the local panel of experts to the foundation on youth needs and opportunities. And this year, they, at their recommendation, we awarded two grants out of the Youth Endowment Fund, one to the Armory Youth Project for their outdoor basketball court, another one to a kid again for helping for, provide adventures to Manistee County youth that have circumstances that would otherwise prevent them from really being able to have this element of fun and family in their life. So. I also wanted to highlight some of the funds that directly benefit the city. Of course, the Ramsdale Preservation Fund, which supports the interior of that beautiful complex. The Non-Motorized Trail Park Fund, which helps support the maintenance, a four-season use of that park. Blossom Boulevard, which helps to make our community even more beautiful and welcoming. And of course, the Veterans Memorial Park Fund, which helps to add the monuments and enhancements that you've seen to the park over the years there. Also wanted to focus on some recent grant awards to the city of Manistee. We're absolutely thrilled about the improvements that were made at Morton Park. Again, thanks to the generosity of Mr. Minger through the Minger Family Endowment Fund of the community foundation. Also, the Disc Golf Park, it's really just been wonderful to see how much use that park has gotten as well. And then you'll see Tracy Davis here, our Manistee County Housing Ready Coordinator. So we were really proud and pleased to partner with the city, the county, and many other organizations to make that position possible here in Manistee County. So of course, hosted at Housing North, but Tracy's right here in our community working hard every day to help increase access to affordable housing here in Manistee County. I also wanted to point out our grant program. The Planning Commission, through the city of Manistee, certainly eligible to seek grants from the Manistee County Community Foundation. We have experience awarding grants to other entities for their Planning Commission work, things like master plan, training, things like that. So we wanted to make sure you're aware of it. Our next application deadline is September 1, and, you know, happy to share work with any of you or Teresa directly, but we are always happy to encourage and support those interested in applying. Our grant program is supported by a number of funds at the foundation. Again, some have really specific purposes, others are much more flexible. But there's one application, and so we do the work of trying to figure out how to patch, you know, funding networks together to fund a project. But we hope that that universal grant application makes it easy for our grant applicants. Eligible applications, applicants include, of course, 501(c)(3) nonprofits, units of government, school districts, and including tribal governments. And Sarah Herberger, again on our team, here with me tonight is our point person for the grant program and is always happy to talk and connect with people on that. Within our grant program guidelines, there's a section called maximizing our impact, and I did want to take a moment to share this with you. I'm not going to read these, but I want you to know that these are important to the community foundation in thinking about ways that we can invest in projects that are going to have the greatest benefit to our community. So we really are looking at these types of things. Projects that address root causes, that are lasting and sustainable, that are going to help leverage funding into our community along with ours and whoever's applying. Collaboration and coordination is just necessary today, right? It's too hard and too expensive to do anything alone. We want to help target underserved members of our community, make sure that projects are accessible to participants regardless of their identity, their physical, social, financial, or other circumstances. And we want to include diverse perspectives, especially of those who stand to benefit from a project. Sometimes we plan a whole project out and we forget to really think of it from the perspective of those that we're really hoping to help. And they have some really great insights that we want to make sure are included. In closing tonight, I just want to say that as we continue to work towards fulfilling our mission, we rely on engagement and collaboration and conversations with community members like you. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to be here to share a little bit, and we hope that you won't hesitate to reach out if you have things that you'd like to share with us as well.
Thank you.
Any questions that I can answer?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Roger.
Okay, just as you mentioned, you're willing to help people out with a grant. About a month or two ago, we had a young lady in here wanted to start a babysitting business, needed $1,000.
Okay.
Now, would that fall into a grant, the picture that you could help her? So she could meet the licenses, she said, but she was all set other than that?
That is an excellent question. So as a public charity, we are not able to award a grant directly to an individual or directly to a business.
Right.
However, we are able to work with other entities that may help individuals or businesses. So the long answer is yes, but not in a direct way. So we were just having a conversation prior, and that's certainly about that very question, actually, before the meeting. So thank you for bringing it up, and it's something that we will actively explore if there is a way that we can help an entity help people like that.
Well, not to continue, if you don't mind, but she said that she had everything ready, you know, the babies or the babysitting, and she just needed the license. So I mean, it seems that was the only thing that stopped her from, you know, and I know we need childcare in town because...
Right, yeah.
I was just wondering if she might have approached you on that or anything, or you're not aware?
So that's a great, that's exactly what we want to learn about, are some of those barriers, you know, as part of the Raising Manistee County. So we will certainly look into how we can help alleviate that barrier for that person and others that might be in a similar circumstance.
Did you have their name?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Are there any others?
Also, is there, what can the Planning Commission do and/or just individuals do to help the community foundation?
You're kind, thank you. So I'm thrilled to know that you're embarking on the new master planning process. So we're taking note of that. We're going to watch it. We're going to participate. So I think that you're doing really important work there because we want to help move forward things that our community wants to see moving forward. So we're always looking to plans and, you know, keeping them relevant and current and engaging the community as much as you can in that process. That's a huge step of it. Please, share the word, you know, if you're, if you see an opportunity to, as you just mentioned, maybe there's someone who's looking for assistance, maybe there's someone who is involved with an organization that is wondering about a grant. Perhaps there's someone you know that's looking to make a meaningful contribution to help, you know, support our community or help it grow. So in any one of those ways, if you want to help connect and just let people know they can reach out to us at the community foundation, we would be extremely grateful.
Thank you.
One more time.
Go ahead, Roger.
Not to, but anyhow, how are you aware? How do you become out to the public? I mean, I personally didn't know about you.
Yeah.
So how does the public know that they can come to you?
Well, thank you for sharing that. As much as we try and hope that everybody knows about us, we know that...
I know.
So we publicize our grant cycle and our grant opportunities publicly. We put ads in the paper in addition to articles. Same with our scholarship program. We try to get on the radio for people that, you know, we have social media. So different ways, but I know there's just a flood of information out there. So it's really hard, and certainly we recognize that we can and should do more ourselves as well. But...
Sitting on $35 million, I mean, you know, people don't realize that they're qualified or they could get it.
Yeah, yeah. And, yep, and to be clear, so that, you know, the foundation's assets are nest egg for the future. So they're invested so we can grant each year and hopefully for much longer than any of our lifetimes.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
What are your typical grant sizes?
Great question. They vary, from less than $1,000 to over $100,000. So again, it really depends on the fund and the purpose and the entity. Some entities, you know, $5,000 is exactly what they need. It's going to help them do what they need to do. Others, the scale of the project is huge, and $100,000, you know, may not be enough. In a few cases, we've awarded grants of several thousand dollars, $100,000, but it's been, you know, very case-by-case basis. Probably the vast majority are $10,000 and under. Yep. Anything else?
Besides being on Planning and zoning, I'm on the board at the Council on Aging.
I thought so, yes.
We, I think Sarah Howard has discussed things with you before and stuff. And we've had several people wanting to use a portion of our building for daycare.
Yes.
And even for senior adult daycare.
Yes, yes.
And I know Sarah's discussed things with you before, but, and she's brought it back to the board, all the great things your people are doing and that.
Wow.
And I drove by Morton Park for myself, and it really has come out nice. And what was really great was there were about eight or nine kids on bikes and three or four on those scooters, and they were all headed into the park. And not only to see the great work in there, but to see kids utilizing that because on that section, there's not much place for them to go, to, you know, to play safely, and that was really a nice, nice thing.
Exactly right. That warms my heart. I'm so happy to hear it.
Yeah, it was nice.
Great. Thank you for sharing. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have public comment on agenda-related items. All comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium will go through the chair. Also, there will be no internet between the podium and the audience. If these rules cannot be followed, the Chair can adjourn the meeting on a limit of five minutes to address the Planning Commission. Anyone who wants to address public comment? If none, we'll move on to new business.
Mm-hmm.
294 12th Street, self-storage.
Yes, in your packet, you'll receive some information about the storage, self-storage unit. Jerry and I went over and took a look at, kind of a spot check, the storage unit. They did receive their certificate of occupancy. In the pictures, you can see that they took out the four trees that had died. They replaced them with four new trees. Actually, I spoke to the gentleman today. His name is Trent Kidder. He's going to go by and get the grass cut tomorrow. I know a couple of people have said, you know, that grass needs to be attended to. That's on the outside of the fence he's going to. Now, the inside of the fence, where there is the grass, that's kind of been there just to stabilize the ground, and it's all kind of uneven, and that was not part of the requirements at the past site plan. So we've just kind of left it as is right now. Also, there was a little bit of concern that there was a pallet business running on or inside the storage unit, and Trent was not aware of that. He put an end to that, that self-pallet business cannot be in that entity. They cannot keep that gate open for safety reason. That is being handled, and they will be out of there by tomorrow. So all of those things have been addressed. They've been contacting me between City Council. Mark had also contacted me and a few others. So that's being handled and taken care of, and I just wanted to give an update on it.
Hmm, very good.
Oh, and they also took care of all the blight that was around all the edges and everything else when I did my walkthrough. I pointed all that out to them and told them that that all needed to be cleaned up, and he's done that, and you can see that in those pictures.
Yeah, yeah, I did that in the last one.
Yep.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead, Roger.
You mean to tell me that the rental units out there, somebody was running a business out of one of the rental units?
Yes, they were trying to, yes.
Trying to.
Trying to. Well, they had put signs up. We noticed the signs. We got this taken care of within a week or two, so.
That was a group that was in the old Ironworks Building.
Yeah.
Really?
Yep.
Manistee got people today. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gee.
The entrepreneurial spirit is alive and well.
Yes, yes, it is.
Opportunistic.
Yes.
I'll go build it in year.
Time and place for certain things to take place.
Honestly, yeah. Go ahead, Roger.
Anything else on the new business on this?
Sorry.
No, this was getting to be quite a eyesore with the dead trees and brush and the weeds and the, just dirt, you know, and...
I like the new trees that they put in. They look a lot better. They look like they might actually survive.
Yes, that's what we're hoping for, yeah.
They'll get large.
Yes, they will.
Again, how many units are in there? Do we know?
I don't know.
No, there's...
There's probably more than that.
There's like seven.
More? More than that?
Yeah, more than that.
That's a well over 100.
Yeah.
Really?
And this is actually, I think, one of six that he owns. There's one only about a mile from my house in White Cloud, and then he's got one in Luddington and just all over, so. But this is his first one that he's actually completed. It's finished, it's done, with him and his partner and his family and everybody working together, so. Very happy that it's finally ended, you know, he can get on.
Yeah, that's a business thing.
When this was brought to us, so many people own things, businesses like this, that don't live in the community, and so, and there's no maintenance or a person on site.
Right.
And it gets to be like it ended up here with such a big eyesore. And I'm happy that this was cleaned up.
Well, I think just opening the line of communication, it's been very nice to work with him. A joy to have him here, and he's not from here. And so to have that and just tell them, you know, let's be upfront. Let's, you know, walk through the property. This is what we see. This is what needs to be picked up, cleaned up. Like I said, I showed you those pictures. He sent me all of that. And then also, on another aspect of safety and security, he keeps that locked. I also got all of the information requested from the site plan that I have access to. from the site plan, that I have access to what security system he has, if something were to happen, we've got that information for the police department, they have that. So, I think going forward, that's another thing that I need to think about, hey, if they do have a security system, we need to make sure we have that information, make sure who's holding that, um, videotapes and all of that, so, that's another thing that's been, you know, I learned from, so that was really good to go through and walk through it.
As long as he's working with you, that's amazing.
Oh, yes, yep, absolutely, so...
Well, that's a good, good deal.
Anybody else? Okay, on to old business, the master plan.
Yes, well, welcome here.
Welcome back.
Good evening, thank you.
Hope you're feeling better.
Pardon?
I said, I hope you're feeling better.
Oh, yes, I am, I am, yeah, that calls.
Yes.
Long gone, so, um, so I'm here today, um, as you guys recall, my name is Tanya DeAlivera, and I'm with Williams &amp; Works, um, we're here, I'm here today to kick off formerly the master plan, uh, process. Um, we've already been, again, kind of collecting data, um, on the project and, you know, kind of doing that, but what I'd like to do today is, um, I believe you guys received a copy of a two-page memo that, um, just kind of has us have the ability to, um, go through the process, talk through things, give me the ability to kind of listen to you all in terms of your concerns, your hopes, um, and kind of lets you understand how the process is envisioned to move forward. Um, so, I can go ahead and start unless, um, one of you all has a particular question or comment, um... Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, so, what I'm going to do is, on the memo, it says there's a kickoff meeting agenda, I'm just going to go through that kind of point by point. Um, I want to respect your process and kind of your culture, I prefer to do things sort of informally and have a conversation back and forth, so if you all are comfortable with that, I would be comfortable with that, um, so, you know, feel free to interject and ask questions along the way. So, number one, point of contact, um, my understanding is the point of contact will be Teresa for the part of the, for the project?
Well, we're not sure yet.
Well...
Well, put her assistant in.
She goes up now?
Her assistant, yeah, yeah, put her Nazi, yeah, it's Teresa.
Yeah, okay, so what that means is that anything that I will provide, um, on the project and the process, I will be going, uh, giving it to Teresa, and, um, therefore, if you all have questions, comments, um, things to provide along the way, I would encourage you to do the same, and then she will direct that information towards me, um, my coworkers, um, so, just that way, we have one point of contact, um, making it hopefully as simple as possible. Um, so, number two is overview of the master plan project, so this will include a brief discussion about the project and review of the proposed schedule, so to do that on the back or page two, depending if you have a one pa, or two-page or a front and back memo, uh, I just want to kind of walk you through the process right now, um, and I would say we're happy to keep this pace, but it's also up to the pleasure, um, and sort of the comfortability of, of you all and the Planning Commission, um, so I'm here today in July to kick off the meeting. Like I said, we've already begun collecting data, um, we will continue to do so, so over, um, now, August, September, um, we're going to be compiling several chapters, um, of the master plan, so we'll, of course, review the current plan, but that means taking information on, uh, the city's demographics, natural features, um, the community facilities and programs, um, just more or less kind of gathering information, setting the stage, making sure that we have a correct understanding of the state of the city.
Right.
Um, we along, and we along the way will ask Teresa for, for, um, any data that we might need or, or, um, are having trouble getting, but we'll use a lot of also sort of, uh, state sort, resources in terms of like the hydrology, um, you know, water systems, um, natural, man-made, not ma, man-made, the natural water systems, um, topography, that kind of stuff. So, as it develop, as chapters are developed, um, I will figure out with, between her and I, like, what would be good in terms of, if you can see on the, on the tentative schedule, I'm scheduled to come here in August, and at that point, we would touch base on the chapters, um, and we have an opportunity to give me, you know, not only edits perhaps beforehand, uh, through Teresa, but I would be here to also receive comments and edits at that meeting. Um, and then, on task three, beginning pretty much in the fall, we will be doing community engagement, um, and just to kind of, uh, give you guys a understa, talking with Teresa, pulling out, my, um, our understanding was that, um, right now, what we've decided is that, um, we will be developing an online community survey of which, um, a draft will be shared with you all, and we can go through that, um, as well. Um, there'll be a two-hour workshop, don't know when or what that's going to mean, but there'll be an opportunity for community members to come together to, um, you know, talk about topics that matter at hand, um, during that time, and then, um, we're also going to develop, um, some materials for, um, Teresa and the community development staff or city staff, um, to help her, um, gather information from community members over the course of fall as well, so that we figure it would be a cost-effective way where she could continue that community engagement, hey, you know, community members, visitors who come to the city, you know, what are your thoughts about X, Y, or Z, um, and providing some cost savings to the project, that we wouldn't have to come up here and do that. Um, so that, in addition to public comments that are received from the Planning Commission or during the Planning Commission, that is our formal community engagement phase, um, and so that is scheduled right now to happen in September and October. Uh, task four is we develop goals and objectives, again, with you all, um, you might have a little bit of homework before that, but we'll have kind of a, um, a workshop where you guys will develop, um, comments or not comments, statements, um, give some feedback on ones that are developed, and that will again be your opportunity to, um, help provide, um, direction for that. Then, over kind of, you know, around Christmas time, December, January, we're going to be then also working on the development of the future land use map, um, we will be, over the course of community engagement, asking people for their feedback on that, so that community engagement will also, um, be used during the goals development as well as the future land use drafts, or by the way, this is all drafts that will be developed, right? You guys get to, you know, um, provide critiques along the way and, and make sure that we get it where it needs to be, but the na, the future land use map and narrative are developed, um, in the winter, and then, um, after that, we bring the whole document together, so, when you see draft documents, um, they're going to have a few graphics, um, some graphs, but it's going to be pretty much, looks like it's typed up on Microsoft Word, but when we, um, when the plan gets prepared and, um, drafted and, and put together as one, um, com, comprehensive document, uh, it'll be a lot more flashy, so just realize that like, oh, this doesn't look really interesting, that's because we're just developing the content, we'll have a graphic designer to put some real spin and polish on it, um, after all the dra, after you guys have an opportunity to review all the content. Um, then, starting late winter, early spring, um, the plan will be, um, reviewed, uh, so the Planning Commission has the opportunity to review the plan, they recommend that the plan, um, the draft plan would be, um, out for public review to the city council or commission, what's it called?
Council.
City council, okay, city council, um, city council, and then the city council says, okay, we think the plan should be, you know, good and available, the draft plan is good and ready for public review. Then there is a sixty-three day planning, or sixty-three day public, um, review process, so we're going to be doing a lot of work, you're going to have to do a lot, a lot, and then for like two or three months, it's going to feel like nothing happens, because that's the opportunity for public as well as other jurisdictions to have the opportunity for public comment. You don't necessarily have to do anything with that public comment, I mean, you, you may, and depending on what it is, you, you, you wait, you may want to very well dive into things, um, but you don't, you don't have to, particularly if it's from another jurisdiction, you might say, well, thank you, but we're going to continue on our way. Um, after those sixty-three days, and by the way, this coordination of sixty-three days and public notice and whatnot, um, I'll be working with Teresa, then the plan gets, uh, adopted, the pla, it comes to the Planning Commission first, and then goes to, um, city council, so, um, again, I'll be working with her, and during that draft, uh, review period, if there are other tweaks or edits that we need to make, and after that, as a Planning Commission, working with me and Teresa, obviously, we can do that, right? Nothing is set in, set in stone, or the plan is not, we can still work things and, um, and make updates up until it's adopted, and then even after that, you can, you just have to go through more of a process. So, that'll take us roughly a year, um, if we need to take a little bit longer on things because, you know, we need to, or hold a special meeting because you have other content that you need to, uh, you know, talk about during a Planning Commission meeting, and you have a master plan, you know, Planning Commission special meeting, you know, all those things, I'm, I'm open to, I just want to move at the pace that you guys are all comfortable, but also, if it's been like two or three months, I'm going to be knocking on Teresa's door, calling her up and saying, hey, let's like, let's keep the project moving in momentum forward, so, with that overview, are there any questions or comments?
Go ahead, Rod. Okay, uh, well, you mentioned, uh, coming up here for work sessions, uh, so what you're doing, when we're doing the work sessions, they're not during our Planning Commission meeting, they're special work sessions, is that what you're saying?
So, um, for example, we have, uh, part of community engagement, so when we're going to be listening, inviting, talking with the public, that is its own, um, event, shall we say, so it's not going to be during a Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Um, so, but there are like a goals and, um, like the goals and, uh, during, for task four, we have a little workshop with you all, so I will have a workshop with you all here during the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Or during a special meeting, and when I say workshop, what it is, is it's really more just a lot of dialogue back and forth, um, the other meetings that I have with you all or time here like this are a little less back and forth.
Okay, well, sometimes we have a very limited, uh, agenda in our region, and sometimes, you know, we have a full agenda, and I just didn't know what your plans were, okay, fine.
I would be happy to work with Teresa to make sure that, you know, in my opinion, we give the planning, or the master plan, it's due diligence, it's due energy, so, you know, I may ask her, hey, what's on the upcoming agenda, is it makes sense to, you know, have a special meeting, or, you know, do we need to wait a month because there's a lot going on?
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, you guys seem to have a lot of stamina, but nobody likes to be here for three hours, I guess, unless they have to be, so, right.
Been here longer, yeah.
Midnight.
Right.
Yeah.
So, you know, I want to work with, you know, I want to help keep this moving forward, it's a balance, right? Move it forward, but you know, also, if you've got a whole agenda, you don't...
Where are you coming out of?
From Grand Rapids.
Oh, that's not bad, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Bob, go ahead.
Awesome.
Yeah.
A couple of things on your community engagement, um, have you discussed or have you used incentives, um, in order to get, you know, better and more broad response from the community?
Yeah, so that is not a part of our budget, but I would be happy if the city has, you know, incentives to talk about, and the incentives can be a variety of things, right? I mean, I don't know if that means businesses give, you know, coupons or a ten percent get discount, or, you know, some communities or some, um, agencies have done like a, you know, fifty-dollar gift card, if you take the survey, you'll be entered in for one of five ten-dollar gift cards to mine, or something like that, that is not coming out of our, um, our budget, but if, you know, depending how the city feels about that, um, I'm happy to, you know, work to figure out how we can best do that, but then again, that kind of comes direction from you all and whatever the city's budget might be, so...
Also, uh, do you have a plan for targeted engagement? So, for, for an example, is the Community Foundation mentioned that they have some specific ideas and thoughts that they would like, uh, are there others that you typically center on as you're going through the DDA or the Chamber of Commerce or Health and Community Services? Do you have a targeted list that you kind of try to, uh, pull the, the meat basically from, uh, from these, uh, very already engaged community, uh, programs?
Members, agencies, yeah, so, so, um, the answer is like both yes and no, so, when we develop, so we're going to, um, help, help you all, we're developing some materials that, whether it's something that you print and put up places, or, um, so you put something on social media, right, we'll have a little bit of what we call like a, um, an advertising campaign, getting the word out about, hey, we're going to be at this event, or hey, take the community survey, um, maybe it would be postcards that, you know, gets tucked in the water bills or something like that. You know, our, part of our process is we, we get good information if we have more community members participate, so we will be looking, um, for ways to kind of help you all get that word out. Now, we're not going to do necessarily targeted, um, like targeted ads, that kind of thing, but, but, um, but they will go out to various groups or they could be shared that way. I will also say, there's nothing like a personal invite from, um, you know, someone involved in the process, so you guys actually are your own, almost in some ways, strongest advocates, you know, if you reach out to your community network and say, hey, guys, you know, you know, I'm on the Planning Commission, you know, I'd really appreciate it if you spend, you know, five minutes doing this, and if, if you guys each get five of other people do it, you know, and so on and so forth, so there's that, but what I will also say is with the, um, the two-hour workshop, depending on, um, our approach and what we want to sort of do with that, and I'm using we generally, it could be that during that workshop, the ti, um, the topics that we're covering, it would be really beneficial to have various stakeholders of the community there, and so I would work with Teresa, and, um, her and I would develop like a list, and you know, we would work to, um, you know, invite those people via an email, or, you know, we, we draft a letter or something sort of, you know, sharp and snappy, and say, hey, you know, we would appreciate if you guys would come out to this workshop, um, so, and then too, with depending on, um, how city staff and the community development staff, what they're going to do with the materials for pop-up planning, those materials are meant to be like a couple quick activities that people can do in like a short period of time, a minute, three minutes, um, if, um, the city staff is at a particular like events or events, that's a particular way to get, you know, pe, um, people who are, you know, you'd say in some ways more targeted, so, like I said, the answer's kind of yes and no, but we're, I don't know, thoughtful and intentional, we try to be at least, and when we're thinking about community engagement.
And then, one last question, is the September, um, start date is, can that have any flexibility? Because we have a, an event called Labor Fest.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the, the Saturday before Labor Day, and that would be an ideal kickoff, because I know some people that would be more than happy to give you a table, uh, to be able to, uh, introduce the, this to the community at large, and about fifteen hundred to two thousand people attend, so it's probably the biggest...
You said fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred.
Okay, it's okay, I just want...
Uh, but anyways, for us, that's, that's one of our larger events until Christmas time, so...
Sure, um, again, we're not going to be, like, we're not going to be going to events, but if there is material, um, and city staff want to attend to, you know, welcome people to, uh, and invite people, let them know about the process, we can certainly, you know, do that, um, and the community engagement process, that's flexible, like...
That's...
This, this, this schedule is as, um, is as, I'd say, not strong, we can be as flexible with it as we want and need to be, so, it's, it's not a hard and fast thing.
We're not creating a wheel, I mean, we got a master plan, so we're just trying to update it.
Right, right, right.
Not that...
We've got some fluid to work with, the flow long on...
Yeah, yeah, like, I mean, granted, I don't want the engagement to go on for four months, but I mean, you know, if there's a good solid reason to, you know, wait a little bit or extend it a little bit.
Sure.
We're happy to do that, so...
And I was planning on going to those events, um, I had planned on having a table, um, asking maybe one of you alternate a time or come in and sit with me, and so I've got several that I've already got picked out that we've talked about, because that's something, again, that was not in our budget, and some, some of these that we've had to cut the corners, we've talked about, what can I do, what can we do, and so we're going to be doing that, so I had planned on that, so...
That's a good idea.
I will also say with the engagement, we, um, we write a community engagement report that actually sort of, um, breaks out and summarizes kind of what was done and whatnot, so as, as you all, as the city goes to events, if there is, um, you know, as you get feedback and results or whatnot, if you can share those with us, we can capture that engagement report. The nice thing is about that, one, it documents it, two, it's like transparent, it's also like it, it's a part of your master plan document, so like five years from now, if people are saying stuff, and you can go back there and point to this engagement report and say, well, this is where we were, this is what the result said, so, um, I just sort of encourage that as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm good, Bob.
You sure?
Yeah.
Positive? We'll give you another chance, Rod.
No, I'm good. No, I'm good.
So.
I'm sure we'll be talking.
We're looking forward to hear more from you and.
I've got a few more points to go through.
Keep going.
Okay, all right, good. Number three, so elements of the existing plan that are relevant, needs updating, or should be removed. For, for you all, I am really interested to hear what you think in, in the current master plan. Perhaps you read it, you know, tonight before you came to the meeting, or some other time. You know, what, what is working in the current master plan, what needs to be removed? You know, scrap the whole thing and start over? I'm interested in kind of what your, your thoughts and directions are. Just, and this is just in the current master plan, although it can also relate to priority issues of the planning commission, so.
No, I've given you a, a list, her and I have gone through some things that I like, that I pointed out, but then there's some other things that I didn't think flowed together, so we've gone through that, but obviously we need to hear from all of you too, so that's something that we need to start looking at and reviewing.
Yeah.
Just kind of trying to pick my way through this stuff, it takes time.
Well, you get a different set of perspective, you know, like you re-going through it compared to what we do. And then, like you say, you can make corrections or additions, where we oversee them. Too close to the forest to see the trees, I guess.
And I guess too, if, if there's no, like, nothing in particular, that's okay. But as we're putting together kind of this first part of doing our research as it is, helping us understand if there are parts that are working or parts that we're missing, you know, there are parts that are still useful, will help us understand, you know, what updates that we should focus on as well. So.
Basically, anything we can think of, yeah, Teresa should get to you. So we just flood Teresa's inbox and.
That's all right.
So I'm kind of interested, just, it just kind of dawned on me, how, how do you address when a part of a city plan has big what ifs? For example, you've probably heard that we're trying to relocate our trains. So instead of going through the city of Manistee, they go the other direction. Well, this isn't going to happen while we're doing this.
Right.
But yet, the impact of it is enormous. So how, how do you address something that is a, a want and a maybe, but may not happen?
Sure, so I mean, with that, you can, you can sort of do it a couple of ways. You can articulate it in a goal and then objective, so it's like that goal is out there for like someday, we hope to, you know, attain this. And that's also nice, because when you sit down with MDOT Rail and, you know, they're saying one thing and you could say, I mean, and again, they're going to say, we're MDOT Rail, we're the state, you can't tell us what to do. And the, and the railroads are a whole nother, a whole nother thing. But you do have the backing, if it's, you know, the plan, it's been a lot of community engagement, it's adopted, that does say something. So you can have it in like goals and objectives, like in that chapter. You can also have a vision statement if you want in there as well. And then two, when it comes to implement, there's an implementation chapter at the very end of the plan. And that talks, it's kind of in some ways like the community's or the planning commission's to-do list. And the to-do list can take 10 years to implement, right? Some things are going to be easy, easy, quick to sort of do, and it builds momentum to the other things. You know, if it's one of those things where, yeah, you want to move the rail within like a paragraph or two, or however you, you know, we want to keep the, the chapter, you know, flexible or more specific. You know, we can write sort of a vision for what we hope to happen and what could happen. That way it kind of gives you a little bit of a roadmap, you know, to keep that conversation or that vision alive. So there's no silver bullet, but at least you, you know, I kind of think of too, is the implementation chapter as like a breadcrumb trail. Like, what was it that we were talking about, you know? And, and, you know, helps you like keep that energy, or like when it, when it's time to get back to that important thing, three years from now, you know, helps you kind of understand, what, you know, what were we thinking, so.
Just like in this five-year cycle, MDOT's supposed to be redoing 31. So that's going to have a big impact on stuff. And that's still a fluid plan, it's not tied down yet.
Now, in that, would that be?
Know what happens with MDOT.
Will the bridge be open by then, Bob, you think?
Maybe, they might have, they might have, maybe they might put extra barrels on it. They might put them on Maple Street next.
So those, those kind of goals and objections, could, could they also overlay into the, the future land use maps?
Yeah, I mean, depending, like if it's a land use matter or subject, yeah, absolutely.
Because it is, well, at least that particular one, because there's lots of properties that are involved. That would certainly change as far as zoning and use. And to just, you know, I'm afraid to just kind of say, well, since we don't know, we're just going to ignore that part, but it seems too important.
Yeah, and, and I mean, you know, and I understand too, housing is a big issue here, is it as many places? That's another place with the future land use map, trying to figure out, you know, what area, what parcels, you know, you hope to have housing, you know, what type of housing in terms of, you know, a lot of times it's, the issue is related to density and that kind of thing, it's all, we'll get there. But that's, you know, another, yes, another place is the future land use map as well.
So it'll be something saying like, okay, if this actually happens to come to be, we possibly would like to see this happen in this area.
Right.
So it'll be one of these things that says, if this happens, we can try to do this.
So, I, I'm going to just ask one more time, because it's, we focused on the elements of the existing master plan. So it sounds like rail, you want to, the rail is a priority issue of the planning commission. What else is kind of, you know, that you're hoping to see in terms of, and I have a couple of questions to spark, you know, sparked, sparked conversation if needed. You know, we talk about housing, you know, I know River Street, there's a vision for that in downtown. You know, MDOT US 31, also the Spirit of the Woods Gateway Project and the Tribe, like, how does all that come into the master plan? Like, are each of those important to think about and, and figure out how to address? Or are those, some of those not important, are there other issues?
They're all interrelated somehow.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they're all something that should be addressed and the plan should address in some capacity?
One thing may take place, which, which will alter other things. We got to keep the idea of, okay, if this takes place all of a sudden, this changes, oh, we can't do this now.
And also, I think the revitalizing the east end of Manistee, we've, we've discussed that quite a bit, the Maxwell Town area, but it's really the kind of the, the eastern side of US 31, almost across the board, has some challenges because of, you know, the, the age of the homestead. But again, it looked like that would be something where we could, we could put some, you know, oomph into it to make development and or revitalizing properties more incentivized.
Yeah, along the old Main Highway corridor, which runs all the way through that area.
Are you talking the peninsula, Mike?
No, well, well, maybe part of the peninsula, but even going all the way up around, you know.
Vine, Casasco and all that area.
Oh, because I.
Simmons Street and, and all the way to, what is it, east, what's the road that goes up the hill?
Up.
Into east, into Oak.
At the top of the hill, it's Nelson, but then turns into, I can't remember what it turns into.
But anyways, that, that's what I talked about, basically that whole eastern side of our, of our port.
Yeah, because we did, didn't we do a project study already on the peninsula end of it? Didn't we do a couple of years back?
Yeah, that's farther up.
I, I would love to be able to read that, is that something you can?
Wasn't that for factories?
No, Peninsula District is where Sings Dock used to be.
Okay.
Yeah, and they were going to.
I can find that for you.
We were going to make it a walking area.
The other part where, where Hardy Salt used to be is the other spot, that's down where Reeve Riley and all them are now.
Century Boat used to be in there.
Yeah, Century's been there.
Do you remember loosely what it was called or what the area, the study?
Just the peninsula.
Peninsula, okay.
Peninsula District.
Yeah, Peninsula District, yeah.
Extend River Street.
Okay.
Yeah, we were going to make it a walking area, district, yeah, with a big gazebo down on the end and park.
Wanted to have like a park and farmer's market.
Okay.
Condos.
Yeah.
It's been that long.
It's been, that's been a lot before, that happened before Mick.
That's probably about 10 years.
Well, and is it, is it an idea that's still like, hey, we should think about it, or has that time passed?
I, I think definitely it's, it's, but what I'm saying is that whole side of our town
Yep, yep.
has challenges, because it was heavily industrialized and how it isn't. And yet, nothing in our plan shows the, the fact that we've changed from an industrial zone into, you know, now basically just.
It's just sitting there now, we're not even taking advantage of it.
That's a multiple district.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the only thing that really.
The whole shoreline, yeah. They were going to extend the riverwalk off the Manistee Lake, there was talk about that too, but that didn't happen. But yeah.
So I, I guess I will also say, if there's any other, Teresa, if there's any other recent like studies or plans, if I can, like, I'm assuming like your parks and rec plan and stuff is online.
Yes.
We will be reviewing those, because I mean, I'm not here, we're not here to reinvent the wheel. Like, we want to take the good ideas that you guys have been working on and keep, keep pushing them along, keep including them. You know, if they need some updating and stuff, she, like, sure, but like, again, like, if you guys have done some work, let's include it, let's incorporate it, so.
Well, and even with Spicer, right now, they're working through the Beach Master Plan, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, that's right.
That are already existing that do need a lot of tweaking. They, they looked good back then, but now they'd be unfeasible.
Yeah.
Things we got to look at, see what would work.
That, that's a good question, is the, is the plan now, is that the beach plan to be an appendix? To this, to the master?
There's been talk, yeah, but I don't know, do you know anything?
It should be.
And there's been, yeah, a lot of people have. It never has been, but there's.
Oh, it hasn't.
There's been talk about it.
Iron Works Building, they had talked about restaurants and little individual store, uh, little. Everybody have a section for store, little stores and stuff in there.
The Iron Works Building.
Iron Works, okay.
But those are all kind of individual plans, it's not, not community planned, but.
Short-term rentals has come up multiple times and addressed it, and then it's fallen off, so I think that is.
So with you, with, we don't really, so, the, I guess, the question is, is short-term rentals are, those are a whole ball of wax and a fun thing. We, if master plans, is that something that we should touch on? Or like, because I mean, we're not, we're not going to, it's not a short-term rental master plan.
No, no, no.
So, but like, should we, should the master plan address it to some degree?
I would assume, I think it should be.
Because it is.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we, we, you know, if you leave it untouched, it's going to go wild.
Or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we've, we've been working with the short-term rentals. I think we gave our two minions to the city council like five years ago.
Sure, sure.
So this is a long-term issue.
Yep.
That we're dealing with.
Okay. Anything else that are like important issues to you guys that the plan should address? Do you have transportation?
Quality of life, is that, you know, we want to keep that at a standard. We don't want.
Population growth or decline.
Yeah, recreation abilities, I'd like to see more bike planes.
I would too, yeah.
Because right now, it's take your life in your hands.
Kayaking trails.
Kayaking would be good.
I know a lot of people that come here, wanted to know, before, we didn't have the movie theater open and we didn't have things, wanted to know what there was for kids. We do not have a lot of activities other than swimming and, and stuff. And now we do have the movies, but I think there could be more kind of programs or activities or something for, for kids when they come.
And when you say kids when they come, so does that mean, are there not?
Not just tourists, I mean, for our kids, my kids, great-grandkids, someplace for them to go.
Year, year-round, I'm imagining, right? Because winter, what does everybody do? Okay, no one wants to sit inside and play, they're wee all the time, they're whatever.
And I know over by the old high school, they freeze that for ice skating, but it's a building back there.
Sands Park.
Yeah, they have some things after school and that, but everything is.
Teen Center.
Yeah, everything is so outdated or half of them not working. Who would be nice, maybe the community grant things that she's working on would help with that project too.
Yeah. Isn't that where they have that skate park or something, skateboard?
Yeah, they have the skate.
But that could be utilized better.
Oh, I, yeah, I don't know. So how much they get used, I don't know.
Okay. With the historic district downtown, what's in the current master plan? I mean, is there anything, I guess, like significantly that we need to address in terms of an update? Or, or, you know, is that been pretty much sort of addressed? Whether it's in the current street skate plan or the newer street skate plan or in the current master plan? Is there anything related to the historic district?
I assume Mark's had input in the historic district commission?
Yes, yeah, Mark Feder has, yep.
Definitely, the new street skate, skate plan needs to be integrated.
Yes.
Because that, there's a number of different potential changes. Again, not sure how many hard decisions will be made between now and when we're looking at a publishing date. But it certainly, again, goes back to what I was saying is, based on what happens, then if this happens, then this would be our, our action.
Okay. So if there's any other things that pop up when, you know, you're taking a shower tomorrow, or you're reading your book on the weekend, sipping lemonade, whatever, email Teresa and she can share those things with me. But this gives us a real good overview of kind of what you guys are thinking about. So moving on to number five, which is the deliverable, so at the end of the process, we're going to deliver a complete master plan document in a PDF that meets all the requirements and stipulations of the Michigan Planning Enable, Enabling Act. So that means that we have things about existing conditions, the future land use, you know, chapter narrative and map. There's a zoning plan, and what the zoning plan does, it's a really small but important part, it's usually in the, the land use chapter, is it tra, it translates your future land use category categories. And it, it sort of show, it compares them to your current zoning. And it says, you know, if this is the future land use category, this is sort of a good comparable, you know, sort of a first level and a second level, first tier, second tier, you know, for your zoning ordinance. And that, because a lot of people think zoning and land use are the same, as you all know, it's not. But it helps people, helps laypeople, it helps the public, it helps developers, so that's in there. That, again, that's part of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, implementation strategies and other related elements. Also, as my understanding, is Manistee is looking to become a redevelopment-ready community?
We already are.
We already are.
Already are.
Yeah.
Is to meet those in order to maintain your.
Senior.
Correct, yep. So, do you, you guys have a MEDC representative that you work with? Or we'll just need to make sure that, like, we'll reach out and make sure that it meets all their requirements?
Yep.
Okay.
They gave a name, yeah.
Who is it?
Didn't, didn't they, didn't they tell us who the MEDC rep was, or they mentioned it in one of the?
We can, we can figure it.
Yeah, but we have, Pablo, it is, okay, I was going to say Hannah or Pa, okay, it's Pablo.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when it's done or before, before it's adopted, we'll just make sure, take time to have MEDC look at it to make sure that we're not missing anything that would put you guys outside of your current good standing, being in our RC community, that as well. And then, the other thing is, is there any other questions or comments that you guys have related to this project?
Man.
Probably come up with.
If there, say, if there are, something like there's none, yep, just give them to Teresa. So what that means is, like I said, I will be, you know, we're, myself and I have another colleague who's working on the project with me, we're already starting to work on the demographics. We've been talking about reaching out with GIS information and asking for building permit information. So we're already working on it. Next time we meet, you guys will have a lot more information, either right before the meeting or between now and then to kind of look at and consume. We like to give you guys chapters, one or one or two at a time, and not all the way at the end, because one, that's overwhelming, and two, like, you want to see progress that's being made. So with that, that is all I have for you today.
I have a Bible question, were we aware, okay, go for it. Were we aware that you were coming tonight?
Yeah, I was.
I mean, the questions you're asking are some things that I would, I would have to give it some thought. But I didn't realize that you were going to be here tonight. Was it in our?
It was in our packet.
It's in the agenda.
We got the agenda, I was looking at it, okay. All right, yeah, but.
It wasn't very, it wasn't very specific, but it touched on that the master plan, so something.
Oh, master plan, that was, that, oh, that's a giveaway, okay. But yeah, good question, but I.
Next time I will list Williams and Works and I will put master plan for you too.
So I know who, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Work cut out for you.
Hey, I'm ready for it.
There you go.
Okay. Next item, 91 Arthur Street, Lakeside Social.
So 91 Arthur, we've gotten the plans that have come in. Do all of you know where that's located?
No.
I.
I know, I'm sure everybody did know, so.
Okay.
Oh, everybody understands.
Yep, so we received, well, I received the site plan. And with that, I have a site plan review committee that I share the documentation.
And with that, I have a site plan review committee that I share the documentation with first. Let me find that here. So with this, I send out the plans to Bill Gamble, Jerry Blue, the building inspector, Josh Glass, um, the police chief, Tom Herndon, the fire chief, Ed Bradford, who is finance director, um, to Pam, to Bob. And also, um, let's see if there's anybody else, and then DPW, and then myself. So what we do is our group just starts to review what the site plan is. So the, um, what I need to do is just wrap up, you know, tomorrow, all the things that everybody has found or noticed or has questions and put that all together and then I'll be sending that out in an email. Um, I'm gonna get together after this and talk with Bob and with Pam, just to kind of go over what they found and what they see. So I just wanted to give you an update that that's where we're at, the very first step in process of that. Um, they do have two liquor licenses, they wanna put in a restaurant. Um, we just kind of touch base. I wanna make sure that those four parcels have combined into one parcel and that that's been done, that the proper legal description is done, that we have a new parcel number, just things like that to initially start with. Soil and erosion, demolition.
You're gonna be right on the water's edge here.
Right, they've already been working with Eagle and with DEQ and Army Corps of Engineers, so that's a whole nother thing. And Jeff McCula has been working with them with DPW, so.
Did you say they have two liquor licenses?
Yep. Yep.
Well, do you understand why?
Um, no, but I know that they were gonna, one of the thoughts is that they're gonna have an outdoor area for alcohol and then also the interior inside where the restaurant is, but that's what my understanding was, that they did receive or had two.
But you wouldn't need to have, have outdoor seating, you don't need, that's Michigan, you don't need to have a separate license, just for, it's a, it's an addendum.
I'm surprised that they got two.
So, right.
I'm trying to remember.
Unless it was a takeout license.
I wonder if that Little Caesar's had one before the property had one.
I don't know, I don't think so.
Here, why would have been.
They may have had something.
Right.
Several years ago, somebody was going to buy that property, put some kind of medical building, doctors or something. And they did a traffic study there, cause that curve.
Right.
To get in and out, traffic is really bad there.
Okay.
I don't know what, I think after all the traffic study, they backed off on that.
Well, and I know right now MDOT is talking about the road diet. So with that road diet, you know, I don't know if that's gonna help or if that's going to hinder that area. And then also, instead of having maybe just the one entrance, um, right now they're proposing two entrances. So I think they're thinking about all of that and that's into consideration, but that's a very good point.
Yeah.
Especially when part of the access to the, uh, those guard cutter and ferry are through that parcel.
Right.
So that's going to the parking lot of.
Yeah, it's hard to get in and out of there.
But you're moving right along, though, you say, right, Buck?
With the plans so far, yep, with the plans, yep, absolutely.
Oh, that's good.
The road, is there?
I know they got that.
Where you're coming through, near the boats. There's a building that's there now.
They got one from that bar that closed up, but it's been serving bars. No, on the other side of the road, sits by.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Is there any other questions I can answer right now on that?
Oh, we're just talking amongst ourselves. Talk, talk among yourself.
Oh, okay.
Stuff we really haven't seen on our part is anything about interior plan at all.
Nope, not yet. This is just that first, almost like a first phase, right.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Yep.
I only had one complaint about it, actually, when I got to looking at it, and that was. They're ripping out all the trees and there's no, nothing on the plan for putting back some kind of greenery somewhere.
Okay, so landscape, right.
Landscaping, yeah, that's my, I mean, they're ripping out all the trees.
Yep.
There's a lot, and I'm worried about this, this soil. Take out trees, things are gonna fall in the lake.
And they gotta take into account that the area used to be old slab docks.
Yeah.
Cause we, uh, when we put Jocelyn Cove condominiums in there.
Wasn't that all coal dock back in the day?
Some of it was, yes, cause. Uh, when we put the foundation.
Yeah, yeah.
When we put the piling, said for Jocelyn Cove.
Mm-hmm.
Most of the pilings were taking only three quarters of a cement truck. All of a sudden, one of the pilings took four cement trucks to fill one piling because it punched through a slab dock. We were filling a huge void under there. They might need to.
Yeah, I'm just, the amount of trees and trouble that he's taking out, I'm really concerned about this.
And that's something I think that we need to address with Army Corps of Engineer is the big thing and with Eagle, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, I might assume that they're taking care of this, but if we don't ask those questions, I'd rather ask and be told.
I know for sure where the boats are sitting, just to the north of them where the last condominium building is.
Yeah.
That's the one.
Oh, that.
That has the huge void under it for old slab docks. Like I said, with three to four concrete trucks, put one piling in.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Hey, that's all, yeah.
It was like, is it ever gonna fill?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Buck, what do you say, boss?
That all you got, Teresa, right now on it?
Yes, for Lakeside Social, so that's it.
Questions on that?
But I will keep you updated. I'll probably keeping that on the agenda, under Old Business for a while.
Those two points are very good and and I hope you will follow through on that, yeah.
Yep, with Eagle and DEQ and Army Corps, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that's the building there, and these are, you know, that big void was over here. Burdell Moonlight Motel used to be there. Okay. Anything else on Lakeside Social?
No.
Okay, we move on to seventy-seven Hancock Street, the Tabernacle Church.
Okay, great. Actually, I'm gonna come up here and then I'm gonna ask them to join me up here.
Um, so in front of you, all of you got a piece of paper here, as an idea. So if you guys wanna come to the.
Oh, you guys can introduce yourself and then I'll go first and then you guys can add on.
Uh, my name's Seth Bush, I've met with you previously. Um, I'm the former campus pastor there, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm Matt Stevens, I'm on the board of the Tabernacle Church.
Great. So right now that I brought all of you here and that we wanted to talk about is this, um, we need an update from them. Obviously, the special use permit is expired, it was, expired October seventh of twenty twenty-three. And we just wanna talk about the intent and possibly the intent has changed. Another reason why I'm bringing this to all of your attention is, as you know, I started in October, this was all very new to me. They kind of stopped it and said, hey, you know, this is where we're at with it, and I'm like, oh, I didn't know. Finish it and what's going on, so, dear, the headlands for me, and I, you know, just I wanna work with them, work with the community and see where we're at with that. So they were kind enough to bring in the plan and that's why I'm here, all of you can come up and take a look at it if you need to. But what they've done is they've highlighted it in red here, all of the areas that either have, you know, are stagnant, nothing to be done right now, or things that they've recognized that do need to be done. So number one here, we have at the very top, it says, change the asphalt paint parking lot and use permeable grass papers instead. And then we just need to know, like, where those would be placed and are they needed? So you can answer that one for us right now, so.
So that was our question, if the, if the commission would like us to complete those because, uh, part of the reason that we opted not to go through with those parking blocks is just a, a cost based on the sheer number of spots. Um, and the cost per block certainly added up. And when we began this process with you shortly, um, in, uh, into twenty twenty, um, we had an estimate from a paving business at a hundred and eighty thousand. And this project exceeded two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so part of our, um, looking at where, where we could trim some dollars and cents off there to be good stewards of the money that people are entrusting to us.
And, you know, let me link you one of these, so when we don't work together, let me grab mine, I apologize for having to. So.
It was just a.
It's a number two.
So it it seems like we've already had this discussion and already gave them permission to not use the.
Pave.
The pavers.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did.
Why it was missing, because I, I distinctly remember this.
Hundred percent.
And us saying, yeah, we understand and.
Yep, yeah.
So, yeah, I think, I think.
That was.
Go through minutes to, to. I would say at least two years ago or a year, at least a year ago.
Didn't know that and I'm not sure where to look and, so, no, but.
I would say, I would say.
About twenty-one, maybe. I know, oh, they've come before several times on the parking issues. To going to the grass and dirt, to going to blacktop and everything. And I, to me, I think the only stipulations that we had was exiting and entering off of like First Street and into the neighborhoods and that.
And we've made those adjustments. We did the necessary curb work on First Street, closed off and put in a new curb to close out. And exit that wasn't being used. Um, and so the entrance and exits has been, um, taken care of.
Yep.
Do you ever plan to put more parking on the, uh, north side of the building? Cause I know that you really have a big congregation, when I've driven by there, and people are parked on all the side streets.
We, we've invited people into the parking lot. Um, uh, we do not have a plan, um, as of yet, um, to do anything north of that building.
No, I don't think so.
It's not really a lot.
Space wise, and there's a utility depot right there, there's fire exits right there, um, that make that almost unusable.
Parking lot for Easter Sunday.
Yeah, yeah, I don't see where there's room to do.
Also, one of the things in, in the discussions that I remember is when, because when they were gonna do the permeable, they didn't need to have the large, um, water retention.
Correct.
And we exchanged that, so at the same, okay, so the same meeting that that was done, was the meeting that we agreed on being able to, to asphalt.
And that is installed, with both the retention pond and the control system going into the.
So that, that was both done at the same meeting because it was an either or. They either had to do this or they had to do that to take care of the water.
Well, and I apologize for wasting your time, I'm, I'm still learning and trying to figure all of this out because, like with them, we wanna close this. We want this to be finished, be done. I know that it expired and so we wanna move on with that. Um, let's go to then, I guess, um, do we need to do number three, the parking block, um, eight by seven concrete parking blocks installed? They were not installed?
That, that was the elimination of, uh, of just cost.
Okay. So number four, just the two trees need to be planted on the east edge, are those?
Uh, still waiting.
Okay.
But, yes.
Uh, number five, um, so the new entrance to Hancock Street, um, if you wanna show them where, what's going to be, then that it was not constructed, so over here?
Um, yeah, so, we, we've done this, we closed this one and that's.
Okay.
That used to be a, that used to be a big, huge one there.
Also, on your trees, if you call the city, uh, they have a program to put trees in. And I think they're like twenty-five dollar and they're, they're designed to be appropriate for the community.
That's a heck of a lot better than the quotes we were getting, so, yeah, five hundred a tree, yeah.
I don't know if that program expired, but I know that my neighbor had four trees put in and he was thrilled.
Perfect.
I think, I think that's.
So you guys gotta.
Yep.
You gotta maintain the watering, I think.
Yep, yep, and we've got, uh, water bags around our new existing trees that are being attended to.
You get a choice too of trees, they have several different kinds you can choose from.
Cast nut or weeping willow.
No.
No.
But you can also check with John H E, the Tree Commission.
Who is that?
John H E, H E L G E, with the Tree Commission. And he can help you out with.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, they'll, they'll plant them and everything.
Yeah, that'll.
I don't know how far behind they are on, cause I know that they got a lot of people that were, were interested in pursuing it, so.
They will say you love them.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Yes.
Get your, get your guys into the program with them.
So number six, um, the north side of the building was not constructed, the emergency vehicles access drive. And again, I don't know if that was a requirement by the fire department or if that was something that was ended up.
You, you had mentioned about the potential of a, of a restaurant going in and we have zero, and that was part of, uh.
And that's what, yeah, was on that, some of the older plans that I.
Yeah.
So that's what happened.
Yeah.
Should be still some way for the fire department to pull their truck in and outside, I think. They pull up, I think they should be able to get their truck up there somewhere so they can get around that backside of the building a little bit easier. On that northeast corner. Is this a bit of a pole of a hose to go from back street around the building to that side?
Okay.
Just, even if it's just something for the truck to pull into.
Oh, yeah, sign it over a doorknob, so, okay.
And of course, he would know, right?
I know.
So I mean, so that's something that I just wanted to double check with them about that. Um, number seven, we just said about the sign, a multi-loading, a loading side and over the door, none of the stuff isn't needed. Can we talk about?
Yeah, we don't even use those docks for loading them.
Okay. And then, um, is all the extra laying done?
Yep.
Or finished, great. And then we just need to work on the dumpster closure?
Well, that was a question we had last time of that, based on setbacks and the trees put in, uh, with visibility, um, cause that.
Dumpster sits here and those trees are going in here, so is that closure or tree been through here?
Cause they were so far back and behind.
Um, based on other, some other.
Cause the visibility, we couldn't, you couldn't see them from the road too easily, so. Yeah, that was, we covered it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think they decided that they didn't have to because it is so far back and you do have some kind of trees or something close by there.
So I'm sorry, so.
No, you have to look for it, that's all.
Yeah, well, and I'm sorry that all of this is redundant to you, is it still all new to me?
It's new to me, none of it's ringing about.
Yeah. But it's not bad to have a refresher of what all happened there.
No, that's true.
He dated me.
You've done a lot.
It's been nice to see the improvements come along as they've been going.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, yeah, and we hope to do some more along the way.
Then you gotta get some of your volunteers to start, uh, get some of the paint that's starting to chip, I see.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the next one on the docket for.
It's gonna be a never ending process with that type of construction building.
Yep.
Well, I just wanna thank you both for coming, just so we could talk about it, um, get them all on board, be a mean cut up too, but still being so new and everything, so. You brought it up, we got it done, we'll be watching it on the floor.
Sounds good. All right, thank you so much.
Great participation in the Fourth of July.
Have a good one.
Thank you so much, we have a lot of fun doing it, thank you.
Yeah, good job.
The van on the float was good.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it here. Now, on the next two, can we combine those two since it's the same owner?
Absolutely, and you got the email, just the update, um, it was great to hear from him, where he's at with that and.
It's two fifty-nine River Street, Milwaukee House and twenty-one Sacred Street, Scooby Snack Shack.
Yes, so he's enthusiastic, moving, moving ahead. I know he wants to get it finished, but, yeah.
He's got like five projects going at once.
Yes.
That's a nice parking lot, he's got, the one is done now, it looks really.
Well, Ryan Brown and son was there today.
Now, they got them two houses down below that they rent out, have they been putting on a rental inspection and stuff?
I don't know, I can ask Jerry about that for the two houses, okay.
You don't mind writing that down for me, the two houses, so they, yeah, that is down below.
Actually, I, I don't, he doesn't rent them, I don't believe.
No, he does. There's people living in them.
I know people are living in them, but those are, he has employees and that.
Oh, might be his staff, he does have a, yeah.
Employee perk, I know that the one house is not, they don't pay rent, that's part of the perk, part of his, his incentives to keep these people.
There you go.
Housing, pretty much.
And that's all right, yeah.
But I could be wrong, but I know at least, I know at least one person does not pay rent.
And then also, um, at the Milwaukee House, um, he's got the fence that's around his pond or whatever in the back and then that's working and it's full of stones and all that, so that took some time, but that got finished and completed.
Lot is blacktop now.
Yeah, and I think they were there today, yes, so, but a lot of work done, so, very happy.
Get them a wedding reception in their parking lot.
And all the landscape that the deer aren't eating, but yeah.
Then, uh, habitable or a wedding or a restaurant?
Well, yeah, he's just waiting on some.
Pavers.
With the license, I think.
And the license, yes, that too.
Also, he's not gonna open them until both are completely ready, so he still has an issue with consumers' power.
Yes, that's been a ongoing.
Only two years.
Only two years.
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
Okay, anything else on Milwaukee House or Scooby Snack Shack?
Yeah.
Nope, I have nothing.
Just for a few days or earlier.
Okay.
Scooby snack.
Moving along.
The old guy, Scooby's now.
Okay.
Like comments and communications.
Yeah.
At this time, the chair will ask for any public comments. Any comments will be addressed to five minutes, addressed to only the planning commission. Anybody? What do you got that funny look on your face over there?
I was born with it.
You're the last one to leave tonight, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's part of her contract, right?
Turn out the lights.
Well, well, Brian, you're good here.
I think Marlene wanted to ask you something.
Yeah.
You don't mind?
Yeah, yeah, Marlene wanted to ask you something about the DDA.
Yes.
Meet somebody.
Yes. I recruited.
Two seventy-five First Street, uh, the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Development Authority. So, Marlene, if you have a question for me, you can ask now.
For years, I think the DDA, it's most of the city's money.
Uh-oh.
And to see what we get back is like, and there's like empty buildings, there's no industry, nothing coming in. And I'd just like to know, what are their plans? Like, we've been two years with the tore-up mess as the gateway coming into the town. And we've worked with people, I don't know if it's speculation or what, that have a building downtown and they've been empty or been working on it for twenty-some years and it's still an eyesore. And I just want to know what's being proceeded to get some of this stuff and get some more people, businesses, industry, something into our town.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Marlene, I can give you the documentation with the contract as to, you know, what the city is paying the DDA right now and the service agreement. You know, for example, the DDA just, um, on city council's agenda earlier this week or last week, I think it was. There was a service agreement just signed, so, you know, the city is getting, we're, we're paying for the DDA, or sorry, the DPW to do a lot of the services downtown and upkeep. So there is that agreement going and I can show you the contract that we have with the city right now. Um, as for programming, obviously I'm fairly new, but the DDA does do quite a bit, especially when it comes to like the facade grant program. You know, just last year, there was over two hundred thousand dollars being brought into the downtown. Those projects are ongoing, so that, the. Those projects haven't fully come to fruition, so those dollar amounts haven't really been visible in the community. But that was a huge step for the downtown businesses and being able to provide two hundred thousand dollars of funding, you know, and I think it was a total of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the downtown, once all the projects are finished. Again, those projects are ongoing right now. We're about to launch another round of the facade grant and that's gonna have an allocation of roughly a hundred thousand dollars. So again, big impact year over year. It might be hard to see because again, a lot of these projects take time to complete. Um, and as I'm coming into the community, I've noticed the same thing. You know, you have some vacant storefronts that maybe don't have as much activity in them as you would like to see, especially if they've just been sitting vacant and somebody's sitting on that property.
Year after year.
Yeah, exactly right. So it's, it's, it's a team effort in that regard, making sure that the city and us are putting pressure on those business owners. And I can tell you, just at this last DDA meeting yesterday, I drafted up a letter, put it in front of the DDA and tried to encourage people to make sure they have movement and, hey, if you have a project that's, there's some financial troubles, it's taking you a while, how can the DDA assist you in that regard, right? If you have a vacant storefront and it's cluttered inside and there's construction material, how can we help you get window wraps and cover that? So we have this uniform, nice looking downtown. And I can tell you from my position, you know, going forward, I'm looking to really draw in those businesses and assist property owners with finding the tenants. Cause that can be really difficult and challenging, especially for these people who might not know how to properly go about that. You know, some people think I can put a for rent sign in the window and that's sufficient. Absolutely not. You know, you have to be online nowadays. You have to be working with the local real estate agents. Um, so there are steps in the right direction. The DDA is also teeing up the street skate plan. You know, we have the city manager on that and several other board members of the DDA constantly working month in and month out with trying to move that project forward. You know, obviously, the street skate project, there's been several studies done in the past and it's just about bringing that all together, materializing it, coming up with a specific plan, work plan going forward, you know, and engaging Spicer and getting those engineering drawings. So then we can actually present it to this board, city council, historic district commission and, and other entities out there to make sure that it's appropriate and make sure that we can get the funding for it. Cause it will be a bigger project that will take a lot of capacity from the DDA standpoint, city standpoint, and, and, you know, hopefully getting some state funding for that. Again, nothing's guaranteed, but that's a project that we're working on as well. So, and if you're looking for other metrics and stats, I can absolutely provide you with a one pager.
I'd just like to know where my money's going.
No, a- a- absolutely, and, and that's fair, you know, because I know it can be hard to see progress when it's incremental.
And I know one of those buildings, he came before us.
Mm-hmm.
And presented, he wanted to, you know, purchase this and do all kinds of things. Well, it's been about three years.
Yep.
And nothing has ever been done on it. And when I asked him the night of the thing, what is your proposed plan for that building? He said, well, you'll just have to wait and see.
Yeah.
Well, I've waited three years and I made it too. I don't know how many more years I.
Understood it and I knew. I, I've heard that, um, a lot of frustration within the downtown and the lack of mobility within sites I have sat vacant um, in regard to the gateway project. Obviously, that's something that the DDA, we don't have much control over the progress of that project. It's a very big and bold and ambitious project. It would be incredible for this community to see. However, again, the DDA and even the city are really strapped when it comes to that project. You know, that's not, we, we don't have much authority in that regard, you know, due to the, the property owners and, you know, just the, 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 yeah, mostly the property owners and, and the funding that they're trying to obtain and how ambitious that project is. Again, incredible for the community, but yeah, hopefully we can bring that to fruition and all come together and collaborate to help those business owners and property owners have attractive spaces. And that's something that we're, like in the DDA, there's always programming that we can do and add to make, make that more efficient and effective. Right? So again, we're, we're always trying to do the facade grant. We have the street skate going. Um, we're always in constant communication with property owners and, you know, just this month, in my position as the director of economic development with the chamber, I've been contacted by two or three property owners asking for assistance, assistance for tenants that, uh, they have tenants in their space, but they're heading out just due to retirement and other reasons. And make, so these property owners are actively engaging with us and trying to take proactive steps to make sure that their properties don't remain vacant. So I, I, I know there's a couple of key properties that you're mentioning downtown and those are frustrating. Hopefully, we can push those property owners to have some movement, whether it's funding.
One of those is probably vacant longer than you are in age.
Maybe, yeah. I mean, two thousand, so pretty. If it's pre-two thousand, then yeah. But is, is that all, Marlene?
Yep, you answered my question.
And I, I will provide you with more information as well, just to make sure that that's a.
And you gave us your address, so I know where you live.
Exactly. Yeah, so I will provide you with a one pager later this, um, probably next week, just for.
Just hop over cocktails.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Come on back, I'm on the deck.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll get you back again another time to talk to us some more about other things going on with the chamber there.
We get, being we're on planning and zoning, everybody wants to know what's going on. And then till Teresa came, she gets us the things of who supplied for permits and stuff so that we kinda don't look so stupid when people ask us, well, you're on planning, well, what's going on, you know?
In, in, just to kind of put a caveat on that though, in my role, you know, with the chamber and then with the DDA, um, a lot of the interactions I do have in, in knowledge I have on projects is kind of under confidentiality.
Yeah.
So I can only say so much in regards to certain projects. In the conversations I have with property owners, you know, I can't disclose names. I, even where projects are, I, I can't give too much away in that regard because there's that confidentiality that I have to respect. So that, that might be, it's frustrating at times because I know people ask me.
We're aware of that.
Yeah.
I got asked things on that stuff on, it was in the paper the other day for the west end of River Street. I had no idea they were doing any of this. That plan that was in the paper. That's the first I saw it, it was in the paper. And we're in the planning commission, they've got this design for downtown in that area.
Yeah.
And we don't say nothing about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, blindsided us.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a couple of people did go to those meetings, but majority of us, that's the first we saw of it. It was in the paper.
And you referred to the street skate?
The stuff that was on, for the grant, the, the corner.
Oh, oh, yes. Okay, yes. The shared streets and spaces grant with M Todd.
Correct, yeah. Cause we never saw anything of that.
Yeah, and, and that, that was something that was a time crunch and that was a city manager, um, really worked with. And, you know, the DDA was encouraging him, strongly encouraging him to do it, but that was more so out of a time thing. That's probably why it didn't come before you because it was two, you know, the, the city manager worked extremely hard to just get that.
Right.
Grant in. So that's probably why it never came before.
You all of a sudden seen the plan in the papers, like.
Yeah.
Whoa.
Yeah.
And we get to ask questions about it and going, this is the first we've seen of it.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So it kind of blindsides us and puts us in a little bit of a bind sometimes.
No, no, a- a- absolutely. And that's fair and hopefully that doesn't happen again. And it's, it's more just making sure that we have that knowledge of certain grants that are coming out. That one was a fantastic opportunity because it's two hundred thousand dollars without a match.
You gotta jump in.
You know, which you don't, you don't see a lot of that from, coming from the state. You know, normally there's always a match. There's a lot of strings attached. And that, that was a pro, a grant that was kind of really enticing and, um, just kind of one.
Little piece that fit.
Yeah, yeah. It was like, oh, wow, okay, it can actually fit here. We, we have a project that could be almost shovel ready. So there was a lot of people scrambling to make that happen. And yeah, it's unfortunate, you know, you weren't, you weren't able to see it beforehand. Um, and we can make sure that going forward. Yeah.
Yeah, just a, just a little, even the, even the dance, the dance warning that was coming out in the paper. All of a sudden, first one, like I said, we had maybe the day before saying, okay, here's what's gonna be in the paper tomorrow.
Yep.
Fine.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a good article though, by the way. Actually, I did cut it out and put it in my scrapbook, so.
Well, I'm glad I could answer her questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff and board reports. Teresa.
Teresa.
So, in your packet, you received the letter that Jerry Blue, the building inspector, has put together. That's just to reiterate to everyone downtown that if you're gonna be doing anything, maybe just give us a buzz, ask us if you need a permit, what kind of permit, what the cost is gonna be. And also, we are in a historical district, so they do need a certificate of appropriateness. Uh, the next is the bylaws. Um, that was in your packet. You know, I just every year wanna put those in there, review them. Is there anything that we need to talk about, anything that you need changed? No?
I couldn't find anything.
Okay.
Go through it every year, no?
Okay. So.
Is that something we gotta approve every year?
Nope, nope, it's not. But I just, um, I know Mick had asked about it maybe a couple of months ago or maybe right after I first started. Um, you know, just, it's, it's good just to review. It's there. Make a copy for you. Let's review it and look at it, so.
Okay.
Um, the next, um, Michigan Planner Magazine is right there in front of you. Um, the whole thing is great. It's all about housing and different areas, all location in Michigan. Um, there's Marquette, there's something in Detroit. So very good one. So read all of it. Good read. Um, lastly, the historical district, I just wanted to go over, our meeting was yesterday. We went ahead and, um, put through and got approval for three certificates of appropriateness. All three of them, they were just a renewal or an extension. All of them were expired. So I do want to go over these addresses and location. Um, it might be some of the areas maybe that you have some concerns about or maybe have not seen much work done. And so we're gonna see some work being done. Um, first one is gonna be, uh, the certificate of appropriateness for four, five, seven River, the outsider. Yep, this has been a work in progress. Um, everything on the outside, um, also on the inside, Jerry, the building inspector's been reviewing that. So that one's, um, done. They went ahead and passed that one. The next is three oh eight River, which is KSE Ventures. It is the building that's right next to Spicer. It's kind of like an, on an angle. There's maybe a Kodak sign or something in the front. So that, um, we gave them the certificate of appropriateness. Um, I do realize right now they do have a stop work order if you drove past and saw because of the decking that's going to the back of the building. The intent is of the building is in the back of the building, they're gonna have a wine tasting room with the wine tasting. The only way that they can get to that and have customers come to them is through an ADA, um, decking along the side of the building. But they didn't start doing work with absolutely no permits. And so we found out, had to do a stop worker, all of that. But they do need a certificate of appropriateness, even though we have that other stuff going on, that was passed and put through, so that's moving ahead. The next one is four one one River Street. Uh, this is the owner Jeff Gordon's building. Um, Jeff Gordon, um, did get, uh, the renewal, extension of his certificate of appropriateness and he's starting to do work and working with Jerry, the building inspector, also the mechanical, electrical and plumbing inspector, and moving ahead with that building is a slow go. Um, but he's working on that and talking with us. That is four one one River Street, Jeff Gordon.
What's in that building or going to be?
I don't know. I don't, not sure what the intent is or what's been going on in there. I don't recall.
It's the building next to the parking lot, on the other side of the parking lot.
That building, okay.
Okay, and just west of the parking lot there.
Yes.
Okay. The one that's had the wooden wall for a long, long, long time.
Right, another one, the three that.
Yeah. So I, I still don't know. And then lastly, the North Channel Brewery, I, um, I apologize, I don't have the address. But, um, that was passed, um, four to two yesterday, um, with the certificate of appropriateness to go ahead and finish their work. It had expired. They're gonna be completing that, the wall and everything. Um, there was a lot of talk and some controversy about historic or the type of siding and all of that, but it's moving ahead and that's gonna be finished. Um, the brick was very soft, you know, very hard to decide on what should be done, what could be done, what need to be done, cost. The owners are getting out of it. A lot, a lot of things going on in years of this, but that's been passed. So I just wanted to give you an update. The meeting was just yesterday. A lot going on with that, but those have been passed.
Did they ever get everything straightened? Cause when they applied for the living quarters upstairs, it was for apartments. And then they were gonna try to fix them and sell them as condos.
And I think they've done all of that now. And that's all been changed with the assessor and given addresses and new parcel numbers or whatever. Yeah. So that's all been done, so.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's all I have.
Roger, you got anything?
What happened?
You got anything, Roger?
Well, I was just wondering, uh, we haven't spoke about any more training. That, you know, the MSU, uh, six stages of, that we were talking about, is that still, are we still looking at that or talking about that? Or is that still a possibility?
What type of training? I mean, I know we can do training, so what?
Master, master or citizen planner training.
Okay.
We need, there's six blocks that we need to watch or maintain throughout the year. And at one point, I think a couple of months ago, Mark brought it up. There, I think everybody is eligible for it, aren't they?
Didn't we just finish that one block of them, of six of them that we had?
I know, a couple of you have finished it. Now, is it required for all of you to do it? I didn't believe it was requirement for all of you, as long as, right, right.
The idea is, if you get the six credits, you keep your standard of, uh, citizen planner.
Yeah.
And most of us are master citizen planners.
Planners.
So we're trying to keep the six credits.
Oh, okay. Well, I can get you that information. Would you like to do it online or would you like to go to the class?
I don't know. At one point, we were, cause we all need it, so we were all.
Talking about trying to.
Trying to.
Put it into some of our, some of our classes, our, our.
Okay.
Our meeting.
Thursdays, have, have the training.
I had a time, okay.
If, if we didn't have two hours worth of other stuff.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if, you know, if we got time to do it, but I mean, I hate to let it go out the window just for no lack of training.
And if you're here real late, I told you I got three bedrooms and a bath upstairs.
Yeah, I can stay with you.
But that's all I have. So if you would, I appreciate it, I guess.
Yep, well, we can do that and maybe coordinate a class, the master plan, then a class and a master plan and.
Or, yeah.
Do that, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because sometimes the classes are-
Yep, let me get ahold of Mary. We can-
Yeah, because that MSU is right, right here in town, that extended.
Yep, that's right.
They used to come here and give classes and we had people from outlawing area around come and take them too.
Oh, that was a good old day.
Yeah.
Did that one with her a couple of months back.
No, that's all I have, but thank you.
Okay. Yes, I'm with you.
I want to thank our visitors and other employees of the city for coming and explaining things to us. And I like keeping on top of everything and thank you for your time.
You got anything?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Pam?
Oh, I've got lots.
All right, I got my pen ready.
Get a tape recorder, it's going to be a lot.
I'll save my big one for later. There's a house, I think it's 376 Fifth Street, what's the cross street?
That would be Saint Michael Parkway or something.
They're doing a lot of renovations on the house, but they've added a log cabin in the back.
Oh, yeah, that one.
Yes.
I talked about that.
Yes, I am aware of that and that is being addressed.
Oh, he has a log cabin.
And I know you and I talked about Renee Cook and the bed breakfast. She has that on the market now. And as a licensed bed and breakfast, I just want to make sure that she had all of her inspections and everything done. I don't want the new owner, when and if it sells to any-
Oh, right, yes, okay.
There, a couple of weeks ago, there was a little bit of a brouhaha on where the business owners were told that they couldn't put signs up in the windows because of an offensive sign that one of their owners put up in the window.
Oh.
And the mayor went around and apparently let the word be known that they are not allowed to put signs up in the window. And I was just wondering what the deal was with that.
First that I'm hearing about that, if it's signs in the windows, I did have a couple of phone calls, but I didn't know about any of that, that, you know, you can only cover 50% of the window and some of them were painted and some of them were placed up there and-
I think the one with the painting is the one that caused the problem.
Oh.
And, but either the business owners misunderstood or they were told that they couldn't put anything in the windows.
Oh, see, and I, I wouldn't or nobody should be saying that and correct.
I'm hoping that the business owners just misunderstood the verbiage that they were given.
Yeah.
Because I know it made it hard. We were trying to put up tour of homes signs.
Oh, right, right.
And every single business downtown said they could not put it in their window. They could put it by the register inside someplace, but they could not put it in the windows.
They were trying to say something about where you can't put anything in the front window to advertise anything.
And that's very odd because I kind of taught a class of about 40 members. The chamber has a meeting on Tuesday mornings. I don't know the name of business, something, and I talked to all of them and handed out paperwork and told them about 50% and what they could do and, and all of that, so.
This has been fairly recently, within the last couple of weeks that this happened, so.
Unfortunate.
It is unfortunate. We're working around it for the tour homes.
Right, okay. Or have them call me or have them email me too, you know?
It's what's done is done, so.
Okay.
Just in the future.
Yes.
Also, my daughter and her family who live out of state, who know all the trials and tribulations we had with the community when the Hampton Inn was going in. Stayed at the Hampton Inn over the Fourth of July and she had nothing bad to say about it, the staff, the facilities. She absolutely loved it and she's a picky person.
Good, that's great to hear.
She thought we did a great job letting you to come in.
Great.
My son said the same thing for Christmas. They were here for Christmas and they stayed there for three-
How about the restaurant?
I mean, there's some-
They're all doing well.
I think the restaurant's doing well.
Cabana Bar over the Fourth of July had a reservation like a week earlier.
Yeah, that's true.
And the fire facilities outside.
I'd say it'd be a little bit full all the time with people.
Is that right? Good for them.
Good.
The, my, my one link that I have is the lack of communication that we're having. And we touched on it a little bit previously. And I don't know whether it's Bill Gamble or that, you know, he needs to have, let us know what's going on more. But the streetscape thing, an email would be nice. It's not that hard to send them all to us. He's already got all of our emails. And also, a little bit with the historic district, making, it's been my, I think we talked a little bit last time about there's a plan for their story garden.
Yes.
That's been approved by the historic district, but we haven't seen anything about it.
The story garden, yeah, we did see-
Plan of it.
We have, we've seen nothing on it for the planning commission.
Next to the library there, that building, that one.
Okay.
I was told that there was an approved plan by the historic district of what could be in it, what couldn't be in it.
Um, not exactly, they weren't finalized and they were to give me that information, but I didn't know much more going on. We talked a lot about the actual library building and the work that's being done there and they had brought us something, but I, are they starting to work on it right now or?
No, I was told that the plan was approved and I'm going, I would have liked to have seen it.
Right.
As a planning commission.
Right.
For rewriting everything right now.
Yes.
I'd just like to have a little bit more communication from the other commissions and the DDA and the historic district and whoever else is out there doing stuff.
Right.
And-
Okay.
And we brought this up to Bill several times before, that we're kind of out of the loop on things.
Okay.
I absolutely hate finding out about plans on the paper the next, that morning.
Right.
I absolutely hate it and it makes me look like an idiot when people ask me about it and say-
A lot of people were concerned about people pulling in that driveway and then the house was there with the, they had the fence.
Right, it's a library, yep.
About putting a fence through there so that if that's going to be kids in there in storytimes, they don't step out into that-
Oh, right.
Driveway.
Yes.
Hell, yeah.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
I think we just want better communication and know what's going on before it becomes public knowledge. That's it, I'm done.
Okay. Now, the other one that we had talked about earlier, you're going to give me emails or some information on, correct? Okay, all right.
Pictures and-
The other, the other thing.
Trinity Church has put up new lights.
Yeah.
Okay.
About that.
Yeah, yeah. If you're in office next week, I'll, I can stop by and, but I'll send you the pictures too.
Okay.
The only question I have is, I was just, the other day going by, wear hardware. Is that on the redevelopment ready property list? I don't think I ever thought about it before. And I believe it's still in the DDA district, correct, is the war hardware in the DDA district as well as the building next to it?
Me and Teresa were actually just discussing that before the meeting because, you know, with the recertification that's coming up.
Right.
There's a list of identified priority sites. And I was even mentioning like, that property wasn't explicitly top of the list on that survey that went out a year ago.
I didn't even know if it was on the list. That's why I was asking, so.
But yeah, it was on a to be considered list that now, since it's for sale and since it's vacant, bump that up. You know, that's something that definitely won't be considering over this next year as recertification happens because year over year, you have to be selecting those priority sites, making sure they're up on the RRC priorities like map.
Map, yep.
You know, you do online.
The map.
So, that's definitely something that-
That should be in somewhere, I would think in the top five. I mean, and that, and that area, by the way, is looking pretty shabby right now. Between the business next door and war hardware, it's, you know, you look in the windows, it's, they're all open windows. One of them is full of washers and dryers and boxes and the other is full of empty shelves. Neither of them gives you a warm and fuzzy when you're, basically, it's our entrance into the city, so.
Even though it's blocked, even though it's a street.
Yeah, yeah.
Even though there's businesses there, they just, they're not-
Even by the post office, those are the worst.
Anyways, that was it.
By the post office, that's two, there's a lot of shabby.
Yeah.
The building we have at, second and-
So, the second, oh, yeah.
In Washington. Second Avenue, Washington. It used to be a laundromat there.
Yeah.
Yes.
We see massive amounts of kids there. You know, there's only two apartments in that building.
Massive amount of kids.
And the plague.
There were like six kids.
Six, eight kids outside of it.
And there's hardly any front yard and there's no-
There's stuff all over the place in the front yard there.
Really? I thought that wasn't somebody going to develop apartments up there?
Never did it, no.
We just wanted to-
Quite died in-
Care out of it or something.
Right, because there's all kinds of plague.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's-
Okay.
So, that's all I got. By the time we probably have our next meeting up, I have something again.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir.
I think, wasn't Mark not going to be here next meeting too, I think?
No, he didn't say anything to me, but-
He said something last meeting, he was going a month, but this wasn't the planned one.
Right, this wasn't planned today, so, okay.
Mark might have to be here. I'll talk to him again and find out, but-
Okay.
Other than that, I've got nothing. I think our new man from the chamber to be here, for being here.
Of course, yeah.